Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the specialist session that we called to deal with some important city businesses, business. Honorable members of City Council, on March 12th, 2020, Governor Northam declared a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. Because of this catastrophic nature of the declared emergency, it is impractical and safe to assemble a quorum of City Council in a single location. In accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21 and Virginia Code 2-237082A3, and by the special authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special meeting by electronic communications means of the Virginia Beach City Council, Tuesday, March 31st, 2020, 6:00 PM. In accordance with Virginia Code 2.237022A3, this special meeting by electronic communication means will be held virtually, with City Council members participating via video and audio conference. The purpose of this special meeting is for the City Council to consider four items to discuss the COVID-19 pandemic emergency, as listed in the detail in the discussion regarding tax release relief necessitated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Although the citizen, although citizen comment will be taken regarding the four resolutions and ordinance ordinances, as discussed in the next paragraph, no citizen comments will be taken with respect to the City Council discussions on tax relief. This special meeting will be broadcast on Capitol, VBgov.com, and Facebook Live. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to the City Council prior to the special meeting via email at citycouncil@vbgov.com. Should a citizen wish to make comments during the special meeting, staff will attempt to facilitate real-time citizen participation in the special meeting for those citizens who are registered at HTTPS VBgovwebx.com VB onstage PHP dot M T I D equal E A seven one two four two one slash eight one nine six A B J B twenty B E D four C nine four two O eight one. In addition to the registration, any citizen wishing to make comments during the special meeting must also register with the City Clerk's Office by calling 757-385-4303, or via email at abarns@vbgov.com prior to 5:30 on March 31st, 2020. At this point, Ms. Barnes, will you kindly do the roll call?
Yes, sir. Jessica Abbott?
Aye.
Michael Berlucci?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Barbara Henley? I didn't hear. Can you hear her? Barbara Henley?
I'm a member.
Louis Jones?
Aye.
John Moss?
Aye.
I didn't hear. Can you hear her? Barbara Henley?
I'm a member.
Lewis Jones?
Aye.
John Moss?
Aye.
All are present, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this point, would the City Clerk please provide the structure for rules, structure rules and guidance, and then turn back over to me.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is the City Clerk Amanda Barnes. Tonight's meeting is being conducted electronically and is allowed based on the Governor's State of Emergency Declaration for COVID-19. Also, please note, this meeting is being recorded. City Council will consider only essential business items and begin with the first item listed on the published agenda. Anyone who registered online to participate in the virtual meeting and with the City Clerk's Office will be called in the order in which they signed up. Speakers, please identify yourself when you begin your comments. After all speakers have spoken, the Mayor will ask for a motion and a second, then open the floor for discussion amongst City Council members. The City Clerk will then recognize the Council members in the order in which they raise their virtual hand. Once discussion is over and the vote is called, the City Clerk will proceed with roll call vote on the City, of the City Council members. Once the vote is recorded and stated for the record, the Mayor then will move to the next item listed on the published agenda, ask the City Clerk to call the registered speakers, and continue, continue as previously stated until all items on the agenda have been considered. All votes will be by roll call and recorded in the minutes. As this is the city's first fully electronic public meeting, and in, and in order to ensure a successful live electronic event, the following meeting instructions must be followed. All citizens who wish to provide comments will be called by name prior to being allowed to speak. Once called upon, each speaker will have up to three minutes to make their comments. There will be no question and answer interchange during this meeting. Once your name is called, please wait two to three seconds before beginning your comments to ensure we hear your complete remarks. If the speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, we will move on to the next registered speaker. Speakers must limit their comments to the topic of the individual agenda item for which they are called on to speak. Council discussion. It is important that Council members hold their comments until recognized. Again, the City Clerk will recognize the Council members in order, in the order in which they raise their virtual hand. It is also important that Council members lower their virtual hand at the conclusion of their comments and re-raise to make any additional comments. Mayor and members of Council, are there any questions about this process? Mayor, I don't see anybody raising their hands, so I will turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I, you know, and I appreciate the indulgence and the patience of the Council and the public as we go through this process, but be assured, we are trying to conduct the city's business and moving forward, you know, in a positive light and in dealing with certain items that we must deal with. We're going to move on to ordinance number one to confirm the declaration of local emergency rate COVID-19 pandemic. Are there any speakers?
Mayor, I do not have any speakers signed up.
Okay, at this point, could I get a motion?
Jim Wood?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of this item.
Okay, do I have a second?
Louis Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I second.
Okay, at this point, are we open for discussion?
So the first Council member who would like to make a comment would be Guy Tower.
Mr.?
Madam Clerk, I was delayed making a motion to approve. I do not have any discussion point to make.
Thank you, Mr. Tower. I do not see that anyone else has raised their hand for discussion.
Okay, at this point, we will call for the vote, and it will be a roll call vote.
Thank you. Jessica Abbott?
Aye.
Michael Berlucci?
Aye.
Barbara Henley?
Aye.
Louis Jones?
Aye.
John Moss?
Aye.
Guy Tower?
Aye.
Aaron Rouse?
Aye.
Rosemary Wilson?
Aye.
James Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the ordinance to confirm the declaration of a local emergency rate COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay, moving on to item number two, ordinance to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID-19 pandemic. Okay, do we have any speakers?
Mayor, we have no speakers.
Okay, at this point, do I have a motion?
Jim Wood?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of this motion.
Louis Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Okay, we are open for council discussion.
Mr. Tower?
I'm sorry, did I raise my hand?
Yes, sir. It appears there's no council discussion, sir.
Okay, we have a mo, motion and a second, we're open for the vote.
Jessica Abbott?
Aye.
Michael Berlucci?
Aye.
Barbara Henley?
Aye.
Louis Jones?
Aye.
John Moss?
Aye.
Guy Tower?
Aye.
Aaron Rouse?
Aye.
Rosemary Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the ordinance to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay, moving on to resolution number three, to approve a City Council policy rate remote participation by Council members in Council meetings. Are there any speakers?
No, sir, no speakers.
Okay, in that case, do I have a motion?
Vice Mayor Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of this item.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Louis Jones, second the motion.
Okay, can we have the roll call on the vote?
Jessica Abbott?
Aye.
Michael Berlucci?
Aye.
Barbara Henley?
Aye.
Louis Jones?
Aye.
John Moss?
Aye.
Guy Tower?
Aye.
Aaron Rouse?
Aye.
Rosemary Wilson?
Aye.
Barbara Henley?
Aye.
Louis Jones?
Aye.
John Moss?
Aye.
Guy Tower?
Aye.
Aaron Rouse?
Aye.
Rosemary Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the resolution to approve a City Council policy rate remote participation by Council members in Council meetings.
Okay, the final number four resolution, to suspend certain portions of the City Speaker policy during the COVID-19 pandemic. Are there any speakers?
We have one speaker, sir. The only speaker who signed up is Todd Solomon.
Good evening. Hopefully, you guys can hear me. I appreciate you all for doing this. If, if anybody can hear me, Sabrina, shake your head. Okay, great. Thank you for moving forward with this. If you needed, you can do this online. My issue with this particular item, it was interesting to see that the regular agenda items and the, I guess, the open mic on agenda items were suspended. I was curious why planning and the items weren't also suspended during this emergency period. It'd be interesting, it would be more helpful, I think, if you suspended planning also, emergency COVID items, and anything that may cause irrevocable public harm as part of your agenda items, instead of doing all just general planning. I can imagine trying to do this with forty Airbnb additional use permits. It'd take you all night, and this would just be crazy, with people trying to get in and off and talk and microphones and all that. So, I would suggest that, and if you can't remove planning items, my other suggestion was, ones that have opposition to them. So if you get opposition ahead of time for those items until after this whole COVID issue, for them, if you have consent to items where nobody is opposing it, keep those on it, and you can just bless those off real quick as part of consent. Again, I would like to suggest removing planning, and if not, at least removing ones that are opposed. Thanks. I think I did that in the three-minute period, hopefully. I didn't get muted.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon, for your participation. At this point, is there a motion?
Vice Mayor Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of this item.
Is, do I have a second?
Councilmember Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
For council discussion on item number four?
Mr. Mayor, I see no member of council raising their virtual hand for discussion.
Okay, at this point, we'll call for the vote.
Just, Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the resolution to suspend certain portions of the City Council Speaker policy during the COVID-19 pandemic.
You know, given the magnitude of the severity of the crisis that we are on as a city, we are adding on to this a discussion on possible remedies and tax relief necessitated by the virus, and other proactive actions that we can take as a council and as a city moving forward. I hope everyone was able to see the very informative and helpful briefing early today by City Treasurer Lee Henderson and the manager staff regarding tax relief and response to the COVID-19 emergency. If a business is unable to timely remit trustee taxes, contact the City Treasurer, who will work with the businesses to develop a payment plan agreement that could avoid the imposition of penalties and interest. If anybody was unable to see the briefing, I understand it will be posted on the city's website tomorrow. And just so you know, as part of the discussion, we also invited Lee Henderson, City Treasurer, to be there here, David Bradley, and Alice Kelly from Finance, you know, to help, you know, with facilitate understanding of the discussion. At this point, I would like to open it to council discussion, and thank you for everyone from council for your forthcoming participation.
Councilmembers, if you would like to have discussion, just raise your virtual hand, please. Vice Mayor Wood?
Well, thank you, and I appreciate everybody coming out here and, and working through this virtually. I know it's, it's painful for people to watch this as we, as we go through it, but just a couple of key points that I want to focus on when we talk about tax relief. I think first and foremost, we need to be cognizant of the fact we have a lot of people that are laid off, not getting their paychecks, or, or having reduced paychecks based on what their employment is. So I think it's extremely important that we do everything we can to, to help the, to the greatest extent we can to help small businesses survive throughout this, this situation, because ultimately, if the small businesses survive, then our citizens will survive. I know some businesses have adapted, many can't, so we need to do everything we can to certainly help them. You know, our tax policies need to reflect this mindset that we need to keep people employed, and, and we need to help people who are not employed, so I would appreciate any input from the city manager, and, and I know, I believe, Tom, you said you were going to come up with some information that would show us what the impact is on specific tax, tax changes or policies.
Mr. Leahy, can you make a comment?
Well, yes, sir. I did send you a letter on the Friday packet for the last two weeks. It did indicate that from a budgetary standpoint, we certainly know that we can handle the, the trust taxes, and by that, I mean, the meal taxes, the admission taxes, and the hotel taxes. We can certainly handle significant delays of one or two months in those taxes. We needed a little bit more time to look at personal property taxes and real estate taxes. We, with respect to the personally, personal property taxes, would remind council that the state actually picks up roughly fifty percent of those taxes under the Governor Gilmore's tax relief program of many years ago. And so we're pretty confident that we could also handle certainly a thirty-day and perhaps even a sixty-day delay in those taxes. The real estate tax is a much, much larger stream, I think about three hundred million dollars remaining to be billed, billed on May one, I believe, and due by June fifth. And I would point out that about fifty to sixty percent of those tax bills are actually paid by mortgage companies, and the mortgage companies are pretty good at waiting until the bill is due before they make the payment, so it's entirely possible that delaying those taxes would simply give a interest-free loan to the mortgage companies and not necessarily benefit the prop, the homeowner. And then also, when we talk about apartments, units, or single-family residential structures that are rented, the same thing would happen. The landlord would realize the benefit of a tax delay while the tenants would not. I do have David Bradley and Alice Kelly here, and they could go into a little bit more detail if there are any questions from council.
The next council member who would like to be recognized is John Moss.
It appears out there into the public, I have corresponded with the city manager at great length, as well as the mayor, and I've shared that with some members of, of City Council as well, my thoughts. I do believe, and I've said it clearly again, if the city of Norfolk can provide relief until the first of August, and they're much more physically stressed than we are, then we should be able to do the same, with the one exception, and I would concur with the city manager, that I do believe that there is a need for a blanket deferral on property taxes, but anyone who, for the reasons he stated, probably might be in a higher percentage, but the people that have individual issues could still go to the treasurer and show their particular impact and get a schedule, but I think a grant, a blanket exemption would really just be giving really truly a free loan to the mortgage servicing institutions, and I don't think there's a real need for that. But more importantly, I think it's not just deferral, I think we have to have a much more aggressive look at suppressing our expenditures. I don't know that we can continue, this won't be easy to say, but other counties and stuff across the state are having to furlough employees for functions that are not operating because there's no customers who can come there, and I think we have to figure out to what extent can we discount the personal property tax, and just because the state pays the fifty percent, or maybe a little less, with some people on their high-value vehicles, because there's a cap at twenty thousand dollars, that's a tax that puts a real burden on people, whether they pay it on five June, or whether they pay it on one August, in today's environment, that's going to have a harsh impact on people, and I think we need to take a very hard look at our expenditures to see to what extent we have the ability within the budget to, rather than saving that over for the rainy day fund at the end of the year, it's raining right now, and reduce, not just for personal property, but more importantly, for those small businesses, the business property tax, not just a deferral, but to what extent can we discount and reduce? And so I think we need, and I know I talked about looking at our cash flow, and I don't think we're prepared to get that tonight, that's unfortunate, to really know where we stand, because we know where many of our citizens stand, and unemployment's only going to continue to rise, but we have services like police, EMS, fire, jail, water, sewer, trash, and those are things we have to do, that we can't really take a degradation in the level of service or accept risk. But there are functions like social services, general facility support, garage, executive support for the manager and the council, constitutional offices, where certainly gradable service levels are acceptable under today's circumstances, and we got to be looking at that. And then we have some functions like the rec centers, no one can go to the rec centers till ten June at the current standing, the libraries, that's true, SGA offices, part of planning, the non-animal part of the aquarium, cultural staffs, we have to take a hard look, the same hard look that
it's painful for people to watch this as we go through it, but just a couple of key points that I want to focus on when we talk about tax relief. I think first and foremost, we need to be cognizant of the fact we have a lot of people that are laid off, not getting their paychecks, or having reduced paychecks based on what their employment is. So I think it's extremely important that we do everything we can to help the, to the greatest extent we can to help small businesses survive throughout this situation, because ultimately, if the small businesses survive, then our citizens will survive. I know some businesses have adapted, many can't, so we need to do everything we can to certainly help them. You know, our tax policies need to reflect this mindset that we need to keep people employed, and we need to help people who are not employed. So I would appreciate any input from the city manager, and I know, I believe, Tom, you said you were going to come up with some information that would show us what the impact is on specific tax changes or policies.
Mr. Leahy, can you make a comment?
Well, yes, sir. I did send you a letter on the Friday packet for the last two weeks. It did indicate that from a budgetary standpoint, we certainly know that we can handle the trust taxes, and by that, I mean the meal taxes, the admission taxes, and the hotel taxes. We can certainly handle significant delays of one or two months in those taxes. We needed a little bit more time to look at personal property taxes and real estate taxes. We, with respect to the personal property taxes, would remind council that the state actually picks up roughly 50% of those taxes under the Governor Gilmore's tax relief program of many years ago. And so we're pretty confident that we could also handle certainly a 30-day and perhaps even a 60-day delay in those taxes. The real estate tax is a much, much larger stream. I think about $300 million remaining to be billed, billed on May 1, I believe, and due by June 5. And I would point out that about 50 to 60% of those tax bills are actually paid by mortgage companies, and the mortgage companies are pretty good at waiting until the bill is due before they make the payment. So it's entirely possible that delaying those taxes would simply give a interest-free loan to the mortgage companies and not necessarily benefit the homeowner. And then also, when we talk about apartments, units, or single-family residential structures that are rented, the same thing would happen. The landlord would realize the benefit of a tax delay while the tenants would not. I do have David Bradley and Alice Kelly here, and they could go into a little bit more detail if there are any questions from council.
The next council member who would like to be recognized is John Moss.
My peers out there into the public, I have corresponded with the city manager at great length, as well as the mayor, and I've shared that with some members of city council as well, my thoughts. I do believe, and I've said it clearly again, if the city of Norfolk can provide relief until the 1st of August, and they're much more physically stressed than we are, then we should be able to do the same. With the one exception, and I would concur with the city manager, that I do believe that there is a need for a blanket deferral on property taxes, but anyone who, for the reasons he stated, probably might be in a higher percentage, but the people that have individual issues could still go to the treasurer and show their particular impact and get a schedule. But I think a grant, a blanket exemption would really just be giving really truly a free loan to the mortgage servicing institutions, and I don't think there's a real need for that. But more importantly, I think it's not just the furl. I think we have to have a much more aggressive look at suppressing our expenditures. I don't know that we can continue, this won't be easy to say, but other counties and stuff across the state are having to furlough employees for functions that are not operating because there's no customers who can come there. And I think we have to figure out to what extent can we discount the personal property tax. And just because the state pays the 50%, or maybe a little less, with some people on their high-value vehicles, because there's a cap at $20,000, that's a tax that puts a real burden on people, whether they pay it on 5 June or whether they pay it on 1 August. In today's environment, that's going to have a harsh impact on people. And I think we need to take a very hard look at our expenditures to see to what extent we have the ability within the budget to, rather than saving that over for the rainy day fund at the end of the year, it's raining right now, and reduce, not just for personal property, but more importantly, for those small businesses, the business property tax. Not just a deferral, but to what extent can we discount and reduce? And so I think we need, and I know I talked about looking at our cash flow, and I don't think we're prepared to get that tonight. That's unfortunate to really know where we stand, because we know where many of our citizens stand, and unemployment's only going to continue to rise. But we have services like police, EMS, fire, jail, water, sewer, trash, and those are things we have to do, that we can't really take a degradation in the level of service or accept risk. But there are functions like social services, general facility support, garage, executive support for the manager and the council. Constitutional offices, where certainly gradable service levels are acceptable under today's circumstances, and we got to be looking at that. And then we have some functions like the rec centers. No one can go to the rec centers till 10 June at the current standing. The libraries, that's true. SGA offices, part of planning, the non-animal part of the aquarium, cultural staffs. We have to take a hard look, the same hard look that residents and businesses are making when they can't even make their ends meet, to generate additional cash flow at current revenue collection rates that would allow us to provide meaningful, not just deferral, but meaningful reduction in the business and personal property tax. That's about 100 and something million dollars. I think that's close to the right amount. In that vein, that's due on 5 June, deferring it to 1 August, people aren't going to be financially any healthier substantially by then. But we could discount the amount that had to be paid, 10%, 20%, but we can treat residents and small businesses alike. And I think we have to talk a lot about actual relief we can do, and we also have to be talking about the budget we got was put together at a time that no longer exists. And I think we have to start from scratch in many ways and be austere in the budget that we put together. Maybe we only appropriate a budget for the first four months or six months of the year at one level to see how quickly we respond on the other end, but make sure that we can provide relief, and certainly not add taxes, and certainly not add fees as we try to climb out of this recession, more or less, when we get to the recovery curve. So I don't know why we can't be more aggressive at tonight and make some direction that we should at least be able to do what Norfolk's done. We're certainly not as physically stressed as they are. And I think we need to look at to what extent our cash flow by suppressing our expenditures and looking at things will allow us to provide some actual monetary reduction in the taxes owed. It won't be huge, you know, but everybody contributes something between the federal, the state, and us. And I know people, the chamber has petitioned the governor not to come and ask, you know, to kind of hold back on some of those tax packages they all put together in the last general assembly, and they're going to be reworking their budget. But I think our focus has to be on belt tightening and maximizing the amount of our revenue that we collect that we don't spend. And I'm in favor of being more aggressive than less aggressive in terms of discounting the personal and business property tax. But I do support its deferral to 1 August. We should be at least to do, as well as Norfolk.
The next council member who'd like to be recognized is Councilmember Tower.
I listened very carefully to Councilman Moss's presentation I just heard, and I've got to say, I cannot disagree with a single thing he said. I feel, my feelings are very much the same. I think it would be helpful to everyone if the city manager could tell us. He made some comments about what we could afford 30 days, 60 days for various taxes. Would the city manager be so kind as to clarify on what basis in terms of the budget? Is that with the cuts and freezes that you have already announced, taking those into account, but no further cuts? Am I correct in that regard?
Mr. Leahy.
So what we have done to date is to put a freeze on hiring and to freeze on unnecessary purchases. The difficulty is, is that we won't normally know the, how much that has saved us until some period of time after the has passed. For example, we have been able now to see the reductions in these trust taxes from, was it March or February?
It was.
We've seen the reduction in the March postings, which were for the February taxes. We have made certain assumptions that I guess I'll have to call more like estimates as to what the revenue stream might be under certain conditions. We can get you something detailed in writing, but it won't, I don't have that tonight. I don't know if David or Alice can speak to a little more quantitatively than I can right now.
Welcome, Mr. Bradley.
Thank you. Yes, we've done some analysis of, for example, trustee taxes. So it looked like for March, we got about 60% of our restaurant tax and about 10% of our hotel tax that we would have normally received. So we've just made some assumptions, you know, that restaurant, we get 25% through the remainder of the year, hotel at 10%, and tried to look at it. So, you know, we think that'd be a loss of about $23 million, of which the general fund would hit about $7 million, schools would hit about $5 million, tip fund about $8 million. So we're trying to take into account all the data that we can get right now and try to make these projections. But that's what we think the impact is on the sales tax, and that includes amusement tax, which we assumed we'd get 0% over the next three months. I'm sorry.
Might as well go ahead and talk a little bit about the, some of the assumptions you were looking at for personal property and real estate.
Yeah, so we've worked with finance, you know, Alice is here. We can talk a little bit about cash flow and what it means. You know, just making an assumption of personal property, if we got 80% of that, 90% of the real estate tax, assume, sales actually did good for March. It actually exceeded what we would thought, and maybe, you know, that was for January. That one's actually two months behind. So we assume 75% for sales for the last two months. And, you know, under that scenario, we projected about an $85 million loss. So, you know, that'd be, you know, much more significant. So, you know, we're trying to look at all this stuff. You know, one opportunity that may be out there as well is federal stimulus via the state. There's some talk that the cities will get some type of relief. I don't know if there's going to be strings attached and what the amount would be, but that's something we're also trying to look at, and just anything that's coming out right now, you know, we're trying to look at, because we know council's trying to balance, you know, the needs of our citizens versus what's going on fiscally in the city.
Okay, thank you.
The next member of council who'd like to be recognized is Councilmember Berluci.
Well, good evening. I want to take a moment, can you hear, can you hear me? All right. So I just want to take a moment to thank everyone who worked very hard to put this system together. It's working great. And to my colleagues, I want to say it's great to see you. I've missed you, and look forward to seeing you all again soon. The topic of this conversation, of course, is the possibility of offering some relief to businesses and residents, and I think that's very important, because our economy will basically be shut down for three months that we know of. And it's my view that we must provide relief, and quickly. A component of that discussion, of course, should be how it impacts the city budget, and I look out for the city budget and make a very informed decision. But what we're experiencing as a city government is nothing but families and businesses. So we need to be flexible. Businesses who need us and buy them.
Let's try to connect again with you, Mr. Berluci.
Well, we want to stand by small businesses who need us. Jobs and to thrive. People are asking for help because many can't afford the cost of these taxes, and forcing them to meet our deadlines is pushing them one step closer to potentially being closed for good. I talk to people every day. I know all of you do as well. And many people don't know where their next check is coming from. They've, many have filed for unemployment for the first time in their lives. Business owners are having to lay off long time and loyal members of their team. They're not happy about it, but they're doing what they have to do, and the city shouldn't be making it any harder. I understand this isn't what we would normally do, but this is unprecedented. Our economy is essentially shut down until the summer and maybe beyond. That impacts our budget, of course. But it also will push businesses potentially to permanent closure if we're not flexible enough to stand with them through this. And so it's my view, it's my opinion, and I hope council will consider one or more of the following: a 60- or 90-day deferral of real and personal property taxes, defer or forgive the city share of sales taxes for March and April, temporary deferral of water and utility fees. And I think we also need to be aware of that some seniors in our community are the beneficiaries of a reduction in their property tax based on their federal income tax return, which won't be available to file until July. And I think we should offer this relief quickly to make sure that we give assurance to businesses and to residents that we're their partners through this very serious health and economic crisis.
Councilmember Rouse.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody here. Please excuse my my voice at the moment. I had some wisdom teeth pulled a couple days ago. You know, I've listened to all the comments made earlier, and, you know, a wise man once said, "A good decision is based on knowledge, not on numbers." At this particular time, not only in our country, in our state, but here in our city, which we have the local authority, we have to be more aggressive in ways of finding more relief for our residents and small businesses. I think we do that in a way by deferring taxes, whether that's personal property taxes, water bills, et cetera, at least at the very minimum, 60 to 90 days. This is not a time to make everyone adhere to our timeline, but it's a time for us to get on their timeline. Every single day is a battle for our residents and for our small businesses to keep their heads above water. It's a challenge to keep their young ones interested during their schoolwork. It's a challenge in being quarantined and being in the house and dealing with cabin fever. Then on top of that, if you're running a business, if you have to close your doors because of state provisions that don't allow you to operate your business in a fashion that's way, that's productive and a way for you to bring in income. So the question we have here to this council and here at the local level is, how do we find, and we need to find, relief now for our residents and small businesses? And that is being aggressive. We understand the numbers. We understand the budget. Let's be honest, this is one of, this is going to be a year throughout the entire world where every budget is going to take a massive hit. I think we understand that by the $2 trillion CARE Act relief package. And so now is the time for us to really help out our small businesses, our residents, and find ways to find them relief today, tomorrow, and going forward. And it's something that I think we can take the appropriate steps as soon as possible. Thank you.
The next member of council is Jessica Abbott.
I'd like to first take a moment and say hello to everybody as well. I'm appreciative of being here today. I'm excited that we're able to capitalize on the modern world and the technology we have available to us. I want to echo a lot of the sentiments that have already been said. I do think we need to seriously take a look at the budget we're getting ready to consider and see where we can make aggressive changes to really capitalize on how we can give back to our residents and our business owners. I know firsthand there is a lot of people that are struggling. I read a statistic just this afternoon that one in three Americans have less than $5,000 saved. And I would bet most of the households in Virginia Beach take near that amount of money to run. So I know we are really looking at some seriously hard times ahead for our community, both our businesses and our residents. So I do agree, we need to have a serious reevaluation of what we're going to do. And the truth of the matter is, is that the situation has changed, and the situation evolves. So I do, I don't want to pretend that I have the answer. I like a lot of the suggestions that have been made today. But I would really like to see us have further discussion on all the possible outcomes, what that looks like on the budget long term, and how we can be more diligent in giving back to our community. And I think the best way we can do that is to take less from them. That's really all I wanted to add to the discussion, but I appreciate all of you being here, and I appreciate our staff doing all the work they're doing. I know we have quite the challenge ahead of us, but I know we can get through it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Well, thank you. Just really as a point of a request for information, when the city manager does the analysis, I'd like to see if, take a look at there's any savings that the schools are achieving, because they've got, the buildings are closed, and I would imagine there are expenses they're not incurring at this time, probably fuel for buses, all these sorts of things that I think we need to take into account as we allocate funding down the road for the budget and that sort of thing, that there potentially could be some savings there that I would just like us to make sure that we don't overlook.
Councilmember Rouse.
Just wanted to add, I know we are experiencing a hiring freeze right now. I wasn't sure if we were exempting hiring EMS workers. I think that needs, they need to be exempt from that. We need to continuously hire as many EMS workers as we can to help us with this pandemic.
Councilmember Moss.
Yeah, I'm going to get unneeded here. Yes, I want to revisit some things. For example, I want to come back to this business personal property tax, which is business as well. In our current year budget, we allocated a, well, we forecasted collecting $163,497,601, of which 90 million and .2 was to the city, and 79.3, we'll call it, was the schools. I do know both the schools ended with about a 20-something million dollar ending fund balance without the bad economy for this event, and the city ended up with a substantial amount. It was over 15 million, 20 million bucks itself. So 20% reduction in personal property tax would be about $32 million. I don't think that's an aggressive goal for us to find in terms of making reductions. Well, it's never popular to say, and no one else has said it, but I will. Other counties and cities around the country have been, and in Virginia, have been forced to furlough people because they don't have, if the public can't come to a rec center, there's only so much people can tell a work about a rec center operation or a library. I think, you know, these small businesses have had to make really hard choices, and it's, though, and though some of them haven't continued to pay health insurance, which is what Norfolk is doing, I think, I just heard today they let, furloughed 500 employees. I don't know if that's correct. I just heard that as a rumor, but I know Chesterfield County did. I think everything has to be on the table. If we're asking the financial suffering, and I agree with Mike, I'm hearing it every day, and I'm sure all of you have gotten the calls and the emails that I've received, but we need to, just can't do the business as usual on the margin to provide substantial reductions where we can. And personal property tax is one big bill. And I'm sure that it wasn't the president and Congress's intent when they gave people their cash check that they're going to have to endorse their check over to the city to pay city taxes. I'm sure that what they're giving those families, so those families could fill the needs and gaps in their personal ability to survive and take care of themselves. So I would hope tonight that we could leave with some direction as the minimal thing that we would do. And I think I heard some general consensus on the 60, I even could support 90, but the 60-day deferral of a payment of, I don't know that we have to do it on property taxes, but all the other things that we're I don't know that we have to do it on property taxes, but all the other things that were mentioned. But if that's what the consensus was, I could support that. But to me, that's just a direction tonight. That isn't the same thing as what Mike referred to is hard financial relief. And I understand, you know, that we keep a rainy day fund for a reason. And I think it's raining on a lot of families and businesses in Virginia Beach. We need to take a look at that, what our margin is there. And then we need to look at building our new budget on a different baseline than the one we received on March twenty-fifth, because I consider that budget unexecutable in the current environment. And and not one that we should should impose on the public if we're trying to help people get along. So I hope when we conclude tonight, Mr. Mayor and my fellow peers on council, that we would have provided some direction, though as we can't vote tonight, and that we would schedule if it takes a special session or several special workshops or whatever on this basis. I will send to all the council members what I have sent to the manager. I've asked very detailed questions relative to cash flow, how to go about looking and assessing our ability to reduce expenditures. But a large part of our budget is payroll. And and paying people when work's being constructively done is is good to do. And I've also communicated with the the policy that we've had in the past, that the mayor talked, that the city manager talked about. Time and a half and double time when other people are working, but some are. It's not a policy we can can sustain, and that should end yesterday. That is, that is not a good stewardship use of the public's money, and certainly not in today's environment. But we have to be on a, just like businesses are out there, a crash course of, uh, of reducing all expenditures possible. An expression I use in my own work, from pennies come millions. And so we need to find all the pennies and add up to millions and billions so that we can pass those those savings on to really struggling families and businesses. And my heart goes out to them. And one other idea I had, and I still think it's a good one, have to look at is maybe we should go on a meal tax holiday. Because we're not collecting much the way a meal tax to start with. So why not just let it go and create some marketing optic and encourage people on our electronic signs and other places around the city to visit your local restaurants for curb service? And then maybe after this thing is over, maybe another extended for another thirty days to re, just to create an incentive and a somewhat of a pump to get people back into the the business of eating out. We got to think of some creative ideas both to, uh, on the, on as we come out of this at the end. But what we can do in the middle to, for what activity is permitted to permit people to, uh, help our local businesses. Thanks much.
Councilmember Jones.
Mr. Mayor, it seems to me that we don't quite have enough information yet to make a, uh, a decision as to where we want to go. I would like to see, uh, before we move too far ahead here on these reduction in taxes or or forgiving of taxes, what the decrease in operating expenses is that's going to be occurring as a result of the slowdown brought about by the pandemic. So I don't know what our reduction in costs, if any, are going to be. So it's hard to make a decision as to what we ought to do and how much we ought to do in order to benefit both the citizens as well as not put our city into a fiscal, uh, crisis itself. As far as the trust taxes are concerned, those taxes are monies that are being collected from the customers of the businesses. And they are not monies that go to the profit margins of the businesses. So in fact, the money that comes in on the trust taxes do not impact the profit or the losses of the businesses. They're just monies that they collect on behalf of the city and then turn them into the city. I can see on a delay of maybe thirty days in the, uh, collection of the trust taxes without penalty or interest. Because some of those taxes are are collected on credit cards and so forth. Uh, and so the businesses don't get the money right away until they receive the money from their medium that handles their credit cards and so forth. So it would make sense.
Mayor Wood.
Thank you. I I agree with with quite a bit of what most people said, and specifically Mr. Moss said about a rainy day fund. And I think it's important, you know, realistically, our fiscal conservatism and budgeting practices are going to give us somewhat of an advantage on this. The city does have reserves, and as John pointed out, it's raining. And that that's what rainy days are for. You know, we have a monthly burn rate, and we need to to reduce the monthly burn rate as much as we can because we realize that the income is is going to be reduced. So so I agree with what John says. I I would love, just like, uh, like Louis said, I really like the idea of getting this information first. I kind of wanted to circle back to something Aaron said, because Aaron brought up a good point talking about public safety. And Aaron said, you know, I want to make sure that we're still hiring EMS workers. And I wanted to remind the council that the overwhelming majority of the people that are running EMS calls are volunteers. Where there are hundreds of volunteers out there as part of what frankly keeps our budget down who are running calls. We've had volunteers who have been hospitalized with COVID from from running these calls. So I I think it's critically important that we that we remember that that our citizens are donating their time and and risking their safety as well to to help us, you know, without getting any compensation. So I think that's very important, but I just wanted to bring that up because, you know, extremely grateful for all of our public safety folks, but especially our volunteers who are out there doing this work for for absolutely no money and putting themselves at risk every single day, twenty-four hours a day.
I'll go back to Mr. Jones to finish his comments.
I have no further comments, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moss.
I just hope that when the the mayor comes to assessing where we go from here, as I said before, independent of what facts we may get in the future, it is clear that we are physically more well situated than is the city of Norfolk or other place. So at a minimum, we should be able to walk away from tonight's meeting saying that at a minimum, and people could do their payment plans with the city treasurer and all those things that she's talked about, which I think is great. But that we could at least defer that people know at a minimum that the property tax and business and personal property tax can be deferred until the first of August, but then that people still need to get with the treasurer, whatever, and work that out with their business. And for individuals, I guess we're just extending it because that's too much workload to do hundred and sixty-five thousand households and do those things. I think we should provide, we can't vote on it yet, but should at least communicate that's our consensus. And that from between now and when we next meet, which I hope is very soon, that we will have the hard numbers and we can maybe provide some hard direction. Because maybe there's some decisions we think we should make that maybe the manager isn't comfortable with making, but they have to be made. And our job is the, the, not to be the first person with hand in people's wallet, but to be the the line between. And I think there is a a place we can more aggressively work to suppress the monthly burn rate and look at what we've already accumulated that we will be carrying into the ending fund balance. Well, we don't have to wait till thirty June to to decide how that can provide one-time relief. But we got to walk away with what that date is. And then each of us can, you know, have our own developed ideas. But that we should emerge from that next session, maybe with an idea of we're either going to say yes or no to things because speed is important and also certainty. If we're not going to do something, I think, you know, the mayor makes a good, the vice, uh, former vice mayor, Mr. Jones, my good friend, made a good point about trust taxes. I think we need to look at, you know, what financial relief makes the most sense and offers the biggest impact. You know, saving three dollars a month on your utility tax bill doesn't really help you much. But if we absorb the fee for people paying with credit cards and they can spread their their pain of certain bills over a longer period of time and not charge them that three percent, that's a policy change which can provide great relief and allow people to spread both business and personal taxes over a longer period of time and absorb that fee. Those are the kind of things I, I think people realize we are not the federal government, that we can't, you know, go to the feds and give them a a rock or check and they digitize, give us money. And we aren't in the ability to run deficits because we have to balance our budget. And on that part, I couldn't agree more with Louis. But I do think we have the capacity, as Jim mentioned, because we have been physically conservative in the past. And no one would say, take the rainy fund to zero, that would be irresponsible. But there's probably some margin there that we can use on top of the under execution that we're surplusing this year that we can be in a position to decide what we want to do and what really that makes sense and acts a real benefit to a broad base of people. But, uh, Aaron's always talking about decisiveness and making a decision. I think I'm sounding more like him every day. But nonetheless, but I think in this instant, I do believe that decisiveness is important. We might never have complete information, but every day more people are hurting. And I think they're looking, and my fact, they are, in fact, they're demanding us to tell them what we think we can do and to be as aggressive as they are happy to be to account for the reduction in their personal income or the cash flow of their business. So I would hope that's how this thing concludes with some direction and some given date when we'll have the this data soon so that we can make these decisions, that people can react on them, they can build more confidence in the local economy. And we can move on to the other decisions that we we face, which is the budget. But we're not going to be able to deal with the budget in a significant way until we resolve how we're going to provide and what short-term relief we're going to provide.
Councilmember Abbott.
I did, I wanted to go back to Councilman Moss's earlier comments because I had emailed the city attorney on March thirteenth with a similar suggestion about not collecting the meals tax. And I think the one thing we've got to remember is while that might not be being absorbed directly from the restaurant or the the other business, it is a tax that our citizens are paying. And when you go out to eat and you look at your bill at the end of the night and you've added six or seven or eight dollars or even more to that check, that is potentially another meal. And there are a lot of families that are saying, I'd really like to go support my neighborhood mom and pop shop. But when it comes down to it, they're a family of four or five, and how can they support feeding everybody out to eat? So I do think that there is merit to that thought, even if it's not a direct impact in the terms of the restaurant paying us. But they might be able to offer more competitive meals. A, the people might be able to go off, go out to eat more often just because they're saving that small amount of money every time they're doing it. And with COVID, I feel like a large part of our responsibility is trying to keep things as normal as possible through this very, very trying time. Because mentally, we are all really struggling with the actions we have to take as a community to keep ourselves safe. And if we can offer a sense of normalcy in the form of relief that way, I think that that not only has an economic benefit, but it also has the social benefits that we do have to be mindful of right now. Because it's, you know, we're just past the two-week mark. People are really starting to feel the reality of this situation. And I think we're going to find that this puts a lot of stress on relationships and how we talk with our community. So I I do think that that that's an important point. I do just want to reiterate, and Councilman Moss made the point of meeting direction. I think the most powerful thing we can do over the next couple of weeks is choose what we're not going to take from the people in the city and how we can move the budget forward without taking that extra money or slimming it down where it can be slimmed down. So if we're trying to pull where we're at, I am in favor of seeing where we can become lean and mean and do what we can to not take from people that are really, I mean, they're they're going over a red pen with their budgets and they're finding that most of their, most of the things that are costing them the most money are things they really can't change.
Councilmember Ralph.
Just circling back to what, um, with a lot of thinness tonight, and particularly what John has spoke about on the short-term relief. I truly believe that we should not leave this meeting tonight with without our residents and small business owners and business owners understanding that relief is coming. I think we have to take some direction and go forth with that. I don't think is right. I don't think is 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 suits our city well to delay having this important discussion. While we aren't delaying, um, you know, tax relief or any kind of relief that our 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 citizens can have right now. So I really think we should leave tonight with our our residents and our business owners understanding that we are, that relief is coming, that this issue, um, this issue is prominent, this is a priority for us. With the understanding that if we have to have special sessions, more special sessions, whether that's two days from now, a day from now, even on the weekends, I'm all in. I think this is, again, we all understand this is unprecedented time, and we have to take action now to find net relief. I agree with the the budget and the processes that what happened before COVID nineteen is no, uh, COVID nineteen is no longer suitable. So we were basically starting from scratch, but that short-term relief has to start now. And that single step has to start now before we can even get down the road. And that relief starts for our residents and our and our small business owners. And I keep saying small business owners, but our small business owner and business owners in general in our city. And I truly understand, we do have the capacity. We have the personnel. I'm looking at all of you with your years of wisdom and understanding and now the business and and the budget, budget works and everything. We have the capacity to find that solution and to be aggressive. It's a, it's upon us to be innovative in that approach and to be assertive in that approach and giving direction to Tom. I'm at the city manager in the direction our council needs to go. Right now, our citizens are looking to us, their city leaders, those who they elected on on relief, on leadership right now. And I think that's something each of us has to rise to the cause as a as a team and and answer. There's no better time and no, no later time than to start now. I think we we have to start now. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Council, Councilmember Tower.
Uh, thank you. I I want to say something about the fiscal strength of our city and the timing of what we need to do. I just want to emphasize how important it is that we act quickly. I have spent the day reading about the Federal Reserve action. Our city is where it is now because of the great work that our financial employees and advisors have done for us over the years in conservative financial planning and execution. And I praise them for that. And I know it's not comfortable for folks that approach their work in that way every day, year in and year out, to suddenly be told we want you to put that aside for a while. But I do think it is very important that everybody understand that this won't do any good if we delay it. We need to act quickly. We need to do work on some guestimates. We need to do work on some guestimates, which we would normally wait for a full vetting and a full research. And I just want to thank the city staff for all that they are doing and going through right now and ask them to bear with us as we step off the edge of a cliff a little bit in what we're used to doing. We're all in this together. And hopefully getting that information that will help us make the decisions we're having to make. And I do hope you can prioritize that for us so we can act quickly. Thank you.
Councilmember Berluci?
Thank you for recognizing me again, but not to belabor the points. I think sentiments that have been expressed previously capture my view, and so I yield. Thank you.
Mayor, it appears that's all the council discussion.
Okay. You know, at this point, I want to thank all the council members for their, you know, contributions and be assured that you were heard. And I just want to, you know, realize that we all appreciate the immediacy of the situation that we're in. I think we do have a bit of an initial response coming from the city treasurer and the commissioner of revenue in terms of acting, you know, with some immediacy right now. But I concur that this is such a high priority. What we really talk about, first of all, is the safety of the public going forward. That has been mission one from the get-go. But the other thing is that Virginia Beach is only successful as the individuals that live here and their fiscal viability and our businesses. And we have to ensure that we take those proactive steps going forward to make sure that the businesses survive through this. And, you know, those steps should be of immediate priority. Now, I will say that, you know, city management has been working multiple scenarios and, you know, trying to find out where our abilities do lie. We also had a conference call yesterday with Senator Warner. And once again, talking about, I think, forthcoming, you know, the impact on the stimulus may have on our city going forward, you know, would help, you know, maybe ease our burden, but also help us with our direction going forward. They're talking about, you know, with the SBA and, you know, maybe a stimulus for and, you know, things going forward in that direction. But I think at this point, you know, I think it's the direction of council, and I thought we're in agreement that we should take all proactive measures that we can to investigate whatever avenues we have to move forward. You know, once again, you know, I think, you know, it's our responsibility, and if we can, you know, proceed in that direction going forward, you know, to give, and once again, it was asserted by some of our council members, we have to give the public, you know, faith that their government is proceeding in that direction. So, you know, with that being said, you know, Mr. Leahy, I think if we can, you know, take into consideration, you know, the directions of some of the council members and, you know, if we can respond rapidly so that we can respond, act rapidly so we can respond rapidly to, you know, to, you know, take forward this great challenge that we have.
Yes, sir. We will do that as quickly as we can. I heard a lot of discussions about reducing the revenue side of the equation. I would hope council will look at the budget document and start helping us identify what parts of the expenditure side of the equation that they might think that we can do without because some of these things that were talked about tonight will mean some serious cuts in the CIP, and that means elimination of projects. It will mean furloughing employees almost immediately, and it's going to mean reductions in, it'll be impact on every single department, public safety, human services. Those two, public safety and human services are half of the, almost half of the city's budget. And so public utilities and public works puts another fourth of that in there. So you get to the point where we will talk about making some pretty stringent cuts into services that people actually want and demand. And so I wouldn't mind some guidance there as to what type of cuts that perhaps you might envision. I heard Councilman Moss talk about furloughing, and we're certainly going to look at that. But...
You know, I think we have to do some contingency planning and, you know, proceed with this incrementally. You know, once again, the landscape of this disease process that we go changes almost daily, and hopefully within a couple of weeks, we'll have far more direction what to go. I am hoping that at some point, we see the light at the end of tunnel with this. So I think we have to have a short-term plan. I think we have to have a long-term plan. But once again, you know, it really comes down to, you know, the residents, there's a lot of people fearful out there about, you know, the uncertainty. So if we can somehow, you know, come together with, you know, with plans and that we can present to council, that we can decide, you know, come up with some multiple plans, contingency plans and the impacts of that. But once again, I think if, you know, if we could expedite this so we can get into the decision process. Right now, we don't have any, you know, formal meeting scheduled for April, but as the need arises, if we do have to have these type of discussions. And truly, I do appreciate, you know, the immediacy of the discussions that we had tonight and, you know, bringing things forward. You know, you know where a lot, you know, council direction is that, you know, at least we start responding and find out where we can cut or, you know, give relief on a short-term basis, and then we may have to go to a longer-term contingency. But once again, it really comes down to, you know, the caring of the people that live here. But once again, you know, we got to do our best to, you know, survive in some extraordinarily challenging times.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I have a couple of council members who have additional comments. They raised their hand, their virtual hand.
Let's go ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Abbott?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this might be a question for our city attorney, but I do think it would be prudent for us to try to do whatever is necessary to hold another meeting urgently. I think that this meeting has resulted in very good discussion. However, I'm not sure we can wait long to act, and I appreciate our city manager's sentiments. I do think we all, as individual council members, need to get out our pens and start looking at where we can adjust things. Obviously, we don't want to impact services or personnel immediately, but I do think that, at least in my experience, there's usually places we can, we can start whittling things down a little bit before we have to get to a place of removing positions and/or services that are community value. So with that said, I would like to know what the process is for getting another meeting. Obviously, I know we're restricted in what we can discuss, but I do think we are on a time-sensitive situation.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the process for calling another meeting is the same as was for calling this meeting. The mayor or any three council members can call a special meeting. The purpose of the special meeting needs to be set forth in the meeting call. The manner in which the meeting will be conducted needs to be set forth in the meeting call. Under the rules that you just passed, a quorum of council members would need to be present in the chambers, but the, but other council members, the rest of the council members could participate virtually or electronically as some are doing, as you're doing here today. So that would be the process.
Now, let me just say, going forward, it's going to be ongoing discussion among the council and collaboration with city staff, and the public is going to be essential going forward. And, you know, we're still planning on having the required public hearings at the convention center on Wednesday, April 22nd, and Tuesday, April 28th at 6:30 and 6 o'clock respectively. So once again, we can continue to work forward, you know, with constant discussion deliberations with the idea of continuing to move forward. And, you know, tonight's meeting was to make sure that we had the vehicle to go forward, but now that we have, we're confronting a major problem. We have to give assurances to our public that, yes, their government is working on their behalf.
We have one additional council member who would like to make a comment. Councilmember Tower?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, when we spoke a couple of days ago, I asked you whether you thought we could have a special meeting not later than the 7th of April. Do you see, and you didn't seem to have any problem with that at the time. I won't, I don't know, maybe you did, but you seemed to indicate you thought it was possible. Can we leave here today with the idea that we would have a meeting later than April 7th?
Okay, I'm more than willing to call a special meeting at the appropriate time. And I think what's happening is with the stimulus, you know, package money and that coming, you know, we have some information. If we could just take some time, and I do agree that we should move forward and have meetings and deliberation, but along the way, we just need a little time to, you know, get some more data points, you know, about, you know, what the situation is, how it's evolving, and, you know, give our management team to really get deep into the analysis of the request so council, you know, can be properly briefed and educated on, you know, the implications of what we're doing. But that being said, I do agree that we have to move forward and show the public that, you know, and by having meetings, you know, we can do that.
No further council discussion.
Okay. But, you know, but once again, I just want to thank for the discussion. You know, this was necessary at this point. Obviously, we are, you know, hampered, being early in the process, and there's going to be a lot of moving parts going forward. But once again, this was the start of a long journey that we will be taking together on behalf of the people of Virginia Beach. And, you know, right before I adjourn, I'd like to just make one final announcement. And then on, finally, on March 27th, I announced that the city council would hold a closed-session meeting to interview the candidates for the position of city manager. Based on the COVID-19 pandemic, made the physical gathering of council impractical, those interviews were postponed. Thank you. And, you know, we once again consider that, you know, the hiring of a city manager a priority, but we want to make sure that we use those, you know, methodologies and timing, you know, to assure that, you know, we move forward to make the right decision. But, you know, that being said, I thank everybody for their participation, and we are adjourned.